Okay, call to order the little city council. Budget public hearing for June 6th at 7:06. Roll call please.
Mayor Bennett.
Yeah.
Council Harris.
Here.
Council Stratus.
And.
Council Grot.
Here.
Council Myers.
Here.
Good, we have a forum, that's good. Do we have any changes or alterations to the agenda that anybody wants to do? Okay, not hearing, not seeing any. First thing will. Oregon statutes require the councils to hold public hearings on matters where the public can't comment. Oregon local government budget laws require cities to hold public hearings where the public can comment on the budget before adoption. Okay. For this resolution, first one up is Resolution 2021-761, a resolution to establish water or sewer rates to be affected July 1, 2021. The public hearing is now open at 7:07. Mr. Cottle, does that support?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, some councilors, good evening. The Resolution 2021-761 is in your agenda packet. This would be to establish the water and sewer rates effective July 1st. The rates are as presented at the Budget Committee meeting. They include a 3% increase. This was presented at the Budget Committee meeting and we're holding a public hearing tonight in advance of anticipated approval at your June 15 regular meeting.
Any questions of the city administrator? If not, do we have anybody to speak for the resolution? Do you have any written comments there, Mr. Cottle?
No, sir, no written comments.
Any of them, any of them today?
No.
Okay. Not seeing, not hearing anybody want to speak for it? Do we have anybody want to speak against them? Not hearing, not seeing any. Public hearing is closed at 7:08. Next up on page six of your packet is Resolution 2021-762, a resolution declaring the city election to receive state revenues for fiscal year 2021, 2022. The public open is now open, public hearing is now open at 7:08. Purpose of this hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to suggest potential uses of state revenue sharing fund. The city of Lowell anticipates receiving the following fiscal, for the fiscal year 2021. State revenue sharing, $11,000 cigarette tax, 3,407 liquor tax, 22,000 marijuana tax, 6,000. Do you have anything to add to that, Mr. Cottle?
No, just that this is as presented at the Budget Committee meeting. The state law requires us to hold a public hearing on this in order for us to receive state revenue.
Okay. Do we have anybody, any questions by the council? Not hearing, not seeing any. We have anyone to speak for the resolution? Not hearing, not seeing. Do we have anybody to speak against the resolution? Not hearing, not seeing anyone. Public hearing is now closed at 7:09. Resolution 2021-763, a resolution to adopt a budget imposed categorizing taxes for fiscal year 2021, 2022. A public hearing is now open at 7:10. Mr. Cottle?
Resolution 2021-763 has the budget as presented and approved by the Budget Committee. State law requires us to hold a public hearing in front of the city council prior to your anticipated adoption on June 15th at your regular meeting. This was advertised in the newspaper as state law requires. It was also posted on the city website. We have not received any written comments or any other comments from the public.
Okay, thank you. Anything from the council people? Okay, not hearing, not seeing. Okay, we'll open it up for public comment. Those who want to speak for the budget. Not hearing, not seeing. Anybody want to speak against the budget? Okay, not hearing, not seeing any. The public hearing is now closed at 7:11. Next up is Resolution 2021-764, a resolution established payment in lieu of franchise fee for 5% on the gross operating revenue for the city of Lowell municipal water utilities and the city of Lowell municipal wastewater treatment utilities. The public hearing is now open at 7:11. Mr. Cottle?
The city previously adopted franchise fees for the water and sewer utilities. The city council later rescinded that to make it easier for us to obtain some financing. Now that that's not an issue, I'm recommending that we move forward with reestablishing those fees. This was in, in line with the cost full, cost accounting principle for the water and sewer fund, the drink them like they're any other business. And this would also generate some revenues for the general fund. And both the expenditures or the expenses rather in the water and sewer fund to pay this are in the budget. And the revenues that the general fund would receive are in the budget.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments by the council? Not hearing, not seeing any. Do we have any public comments for the resolution? Any public, public comments against the resolution? Not hearing, not seeing any. Public hearing is closed at 7:12. On the page 110 in our packet, Resolution 2021-765, a resolution certifying services. The public hearing is now open at 7:11. Mr. Cottle?
State law requires the city to pass a resolution certifying that we provide certain services in order to receive state revenues and to hold a public hearing on this. This is something we've done pretty much every year. That's pretty much what this is.
Okay. Any questions of the city administrator? Not seeing any, not hearing any? Okay. Okay. We're now open for a public comment. Those who want to speak for the resolution. Do we have anyone want to speak? Not seeing, not hearing anybody. Anybody want to speak against the resolution? Not seeing, not hearing anybody. The public hearing for Resolution 2021-765 is closed at 7:14. That concludes the public hearing. Does anybody have anything you want to add before we go into work session? Not hearing, not seeing anything. We're adjourned at 7:14. Let's stop the recording, or you want to continue on?
You can go.
Okay. Call to order the work session for June 1st, 7:15. Do we need to roll, do a roll call again or not?
I don't think so.
Okay, we're still all here present. Okay, that sounds good to me. First up is a presentation by Ariel Rubin, venture capitalist with the Eugene Regional Accelerator Innovation Network, Rain. Good to see you Ariel for the first time. So.
Wonderful.
Mr. Cottle, do you want to introduce her in any way or just let her go?
Ariel took over from Raj. He left as soon as I was coming on board. The city is a financial supporter of the Rain organization. And I invited Ariel to join you tonight, just to bring you up to speed on what they've been working on.
Thanks Jeremy, thanks council, thanks mayor. I really appreciate being here. I just wanted to quickly gauge how many of you were, are familiar with our work in the past? Should I do a little refresher on who we are and what we do, or should I just go into some updates? What do you all, what would you all like?
We all know.
I think we've all attended at least one or two of the meetings that, for the group that Raj put on. I think, okay, I'll let you go ahead.
Okay, do you all know enough about me? Should I introduce myself a little bit? Cause I don't know if we've had. Wonderful. I just wanted to gauge the room. Excellent. So I'll do that. Um, I'm just gonna open up my slides here and I'll just go through a few quick slides and then I have a few updates to share. So let's see, can you all make me, let's see, screen share? Oh, excellent. Okay, do you all see my screen? Excellent, perfect. Okay, well, I'm so excited to be here. Thank you all so much and thank you Jeremy for the invitation. It's been wonderful to get to know you a little bit. Welcome to Oregon. Again, we're Oregon Rain. I just wanted to tell you a bit about me. So I'm Ariel Rubin and I've been working for Rain for the last two years. I'm the Lane County Venture Catalyst. After Raj decided to move fully into his tea business, I was able to sort of put some of my side projects aside and sort of dive full into all of, to serve all of Lane County. So I work with Oak Ridge, Lowell, Veneta, Coburg, Crestwell, and Florence, which is exciting and a lot, but we have a wonderful team and a huge network of resources and mentors that, that I can draw from. So it's been really wonderful. Um, I also own my own marketing company. I like to say that I support small businesses, help them get more efficient. So helping them set up websites, social media, all of that. And then my family owns a business in Eugene, Oregon called Hummingbird Wholesale. Um, I think some of you may have been on the hiring committee for Raj. And I actually pitched for the same position and we were hired at the same time. So maybe you all remember my story from way back when. But I was actually moved over into a different area and Raj, of course, was working with Oak Ridge Lowell and Veneta. But when he left, you all had liked me apparently. So that was wonderful. We didn't have to have a second hiring process. But I'm super excited to be here. So just a tiny bit more about me. I was raised actually in Dexter on a commune. A lot of hippies, yes, a little weird, but it was a lot of organic food and you know, homeschooling and all of that. And then I went off to school in Arizona. And I studied counseling and psychology and realized I wanted nothing to do with that. And when I graduated, like a lot of us, college kids. But I ended up moving to San Diego where I had a lot of friends. And actually I got a job. I had a connection who was a venture capitalist who, you know, of course, had a lot of money investing in companies. He said, hey, you should come work for us over here. So I was doing similar work to what we do at Rain, but on a much bigger scale where I was working with the guys at the big checks and you know, the technology and the life science and all of these, you know, pharmaceutical companies and crazy stuff. So it was almost a hippie kid goes to Silicon Valley type story. You know, I had no idea what I was doing, but I learned so much. And yeah, so I'm, I'm here today. My family owns a business in Eugene called Hummingbird Wholesale and we source bulk food. So essentially we work with farmers across the Pacific Northwest to source whole grains, beans, dried fruit, sweeteners, so anything in like the bulk section, you know, those bins. That's sort of what we source. So we're an ingredient supplier. So I like to say that when I was in San Diego, I got sort of the, the MBA, like an unofficial MBA in startups and fast-paced business. And then I moved home four years ago to work with my family. And they were like, you're moving too fast for us, girl. You gotta slow down. Like we're in long-term sustainable brick and mortar, you know, trucks, warehouses and stuff. So I like to say I got my second MBA working with my family. So I worked with my family for two years until that sort of butted heads with your parents and I realized I needed to go try other things. So I started working with a startup making hazelnut milk, like you know, almond milk or rice milk, but with hazelnuts. And then Caroline Cummings, the executor, executive director of Rain recruited me. So that was the, the long story short. But I've been working for Rain for two years. So I have a diversity of experience in, in supporting small businesses and a, and a wide network, which is really sort of the apex of what we do is help businesses get connected to where they need to go. You know, hey, I need a CPA. Hey, I need a lawyer. Hey, I need a mentor. Hey, I need a program, you know, to get me started. So that's essentially what we do. And I love it so much. It's so thrilling to, to be able to work with small businesses across Oregon and watch them grow. So that's a little bit about me. Um, I think because you already know all of this, I'm just gonna stop sharing my screen here and move over to, we have a reporting system and also a scorecard system. And I just wanted to share both of those resources with you. I don't know if you all had the chance to see both our scorecard and our report from when Raj left, but I wanted to share both of those with you so that you could see. So this is actually our, our year, our annual report, which was last year. So of course we're already halfway through 2021. I can't even believe it. However, this was from last year and I'm working on the six month report, which I'll send to you hopefully at the end of this month. But I just wanted to share with you sort of the format of, of what a report looks like so that you all have that familiarity and I'll send this to you after the fact. So because Oak Ridge and Lowell are in the same contract together, we, we make the report together. So this is with both Oak Ridge and Lowell. But of course, right here you have beautiful Selena here with her flower shop with this lovely quote. Again, this was last year working with Raj. You are my lifeline to get through this. So that was wonderful in 2020. Of course, we all met a lot of hiccups. So it's a wonderful quote.
Ariel, I don't think.
Oh, you're not seeing this?
You're not.
Okay, I'm gonna stop showing my screen and restart. Let's see if that works. Now?
There it is, yeah.
Okay, there you go. Sorry about that. Okay, so this is, this is our report format here. And again, here's this lovely picture of Selena talking with Raj up here on Zoom, getting her through, you know, 2020, which was really rough. We did a lot of outreach in terms of helping folks apply for the, the funding, the various funding opportunities that were coming through with COVID relief aid, which was super confusing. And all of us were trying to get through it ourselves, being small business owners ourselves. I think as all of you know, everyone that works for Rain is an entrepreneur. Cause otherwise, you know, we don't want someone who's read a book to help a small business. Cause that, that person's gonna be like, you don't understand me. You've never done it. So we're all entrepreneurs and we're all going through the same thing. So that, that allows us to be able to help and support small businesses. So again, here's a little paragraph that talks about sort of these two windows. One was before COVID, one was after. Cause last year was sort of marked by two, two periods. And then here we have all of the entrepreneurs that we've served. So I'll let you all read through this on your own, but essentially we have, let's see, Fergus from Dexter. And then we have Yasmin with physical, with the physical therapy clinic. Jerry Valencia with the construction company. I'm sure you all know the story that Raj was able to connect him with a brewery that Raj was working with in Veneta and they're trying to build over there. So that was an awesome connection. Joe here and Kristen, of course, with the coffee shop. Matt with Bridge Charter Academy. Ryan with an Airbnb property and real estate. Selena with the flower shop, of course. So those were all the folks that we were able to help last year. And I've actually been able to continue serving them this year and haven't had any new folks come in. I think it's just the nature of our work being online. It's sort of hard for folks to. Yeah, it, I mean, it's just, it's just a bummer. Raj had had these connections before the pandemic started. And you know, was able to service them through and I've continued to work with them. But I think it's just hard to, to get folks to come in in this virtual environment. So as soon as the pandemic is, is really over, we'll start, you know, in-person events. But I would like to say and preface that with, if you all have and know of small businesses in the area that need support, even if it's just someone in their garage, she was, you know, starting this awesome thing and they'd love to, to get some support. Please send them my way. Cause you know, it's, it's often through referral that, that we, that we support small businesses. So here is a detailed description of, of all of the support that we were able to help them with. So I'd love for you to check that out. These are all Oak Ridge folks. And then I wanted you to see this. So we actually were able to host 61 events last year, which was crazy. And we're, this year we're continuing to hold really strong numbers. And that number is so high because of course, virtual, you can do many events a week and, and still get through. So I just wanted to show you here. We, we realized partway through the, the pandemic that folks needed, you know, they needed help moving their businesses online. So we were actually able to put together a 12-week social media and online marketing rainmaker accelerator. So people were able to get their businesses online, which was amazing. So we had a lot of folks join, including people from Lowell through that. So you can read through all of these numerous events here. You can see here, these were, these were, this is the accelerator all here below. So we have the rainmaker accelerator, which was 12 weeks, pretty impressive. And we had incredible speakers and quite a, quite a robust program there. So I want to highlight this section as well. So this is where we just have some, some sort of high level notable events that we wanted to share. So we were able to host, continue the momentum with the Highway 58 Business Network. And that I'm trying to launch again and I've connected with Rusty Auckland over at the bank. So we're gonna try and make sure that that continues to grow, especially virtual. That's been hard to keep that going. So if you all have any ideas on that, we'll definitely do that. And we were able to actually advocate for a lot of small businesses at the senate level. Senator Ron Wyden, we had a few calls with him and we featured some small businesses. They were able to directly talk to, to Wyden and share their story through the pandemic so that he was better able to, to advocate for them. So that was awesome. So take a look at, at these high level events here. And then this section here is just the funding and how funds are allocated. So as all of you know, we raise money from you, which is pretty small in comparison to, you know, the total dollar amounts that it takes for the, the program to actually move forward. And we match, we match those funds with all of these other grants and foundations. So you're welcome to take a look. And these are partners that we connect with. So you're able, you're able to take a look at that. And then of course, what's next? We always have a what's next section. So I'll send this over to you so you all can just take a deeper look at these reports. And again, I will be sending 2021 shortly, six month report. So the other thing that I want to share with you, we call this an ecosystem scorecard. So we often talk about entrepreneurial ecosystems. That's of course, what we're doing is we're building these environments for small businesses to move quickly and to be nurtured and have relevant connections to be able to, of course, succeed. So this is essentially a readiness assessment and ecosystem scorecard assessment where we think directly about the city. And how much, you know, how easy is it for a small business to, to thrive here? So here we have, of course, government buy-in, that needs to exist, which you all are here. Jeremy's new, we're super excited that, you know, he's really into supporting small businesses, that their government leadership is, is demonstrating a willingness to amend policies and work well with businesses. I'm sure you all have that. Human capital and talent, making sure that, you know, when a business starts, they can actually hire talent. That's always important. Workforce training, the right education, of course. Mentors, people who've been there, done that, that they can, you know, help you move forward and, and tell you their own stories. And that there's local media, cause we've found that it really helps when, you know, the local stories are being told. That there's multiple ecosystem partners engaged. Entrepreneurs have stepped up to champion the ecosystem. We find that when entrepreneurs are actively engaged in creating this system, it works so much better. So that's always wonderful. That there's good physical assets like a kitchen, if someone needs to use a kitchen space or a co-working space. You know, it's always important. I actually, my family owns two incubator kitchens in Eugene, which is pretty cool. So we've seen a lot of small businesses use the kitchen and start their business that way. That there's money available, that there's capital, all these different elements, that there's services provided, of course, banks and, and all of that. And that there's of course, global and, and market support. So this is just a high level. And then there's this beautiful narrative below that talks about Lowell. And we wrote this as a team. So I would encourage you to just take a look, read through this and let me know what you think. Because this scorecard can just spark some thoughts and conversation. And you know, you're welcome to just grade yourself on here. It's just, you know, mental exercise to help think about all of these areas. But we'd love for you to take a look. So I think that concludes my 10 minutes. I was wondering if you all had any questions, thoughts, comments, anything that I could touch on?
That's excellent. I, you guys do such a great job. I just love the fact that we offer this to our community. So thank you. Thank you. It's huge, it's wonderful that you were able to navigate through the COVID stuff. That's impressive.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, definitely a beneficial service, especially for the small person trying to start a business. You know, if, if the odd says they're not gonna succeed, but if they have somebody to help them, it improves on their odds. So definitely appreciate what you're doing and helping the ones that are, you're helping.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, just one last comment I forgot to mention. We're currently doing a 12-week accelerator and it's cool because it's completely virtual. You know, we're continuing that trend. But it's essentially a 12-week course and this one is a moneymaker. So it's all about financial know-how. And that was one thing that we realized is throughout the pandemic, when we were trying to get small businesses to apply for these fun, funding opportunities, they were saying, well, I don't have a balance sheet. I don't have a profit and loss. I've never done my books. I can't show them that I've lost money because I've never tracked it. So we were like, oh my gosh, what do we do? So we worked, of course, one-on-one with a lot of these small businesses to help them get their books in order so they could apply. But we realized we needed to put together a program. So of course, all of our services are free because of all of you and the funding that we, that we raised to match. But it's 12 weeks. There's a few folks from Lowell do the program. And they're just diving into their numbers. It's really hardcore and wonderful. So, yeah.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, yeah.
Thanks, everybody. Great to see you.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is the page 112, discussion of marketing process for the city property on East Main Street.
Thank you, Mayor. I received some questions, comments, suggestions from city council on this item. And it is placed on the agenda for further discussion and direction about the potential process on marketing the city's East Main Street property. The process, if city council chooses to implement one, could look like us putting out a request for proposals to developers, having an open timeframe for all interested parties to have a chance to submit something. to have a chance to submit something, which city council would in turn review before making a final decision. So like I said, this is just placed on the agenda for further discussion and direction.
What kind of timetable are we looking at on that?
This would be based based on, I mean, the longer we hold something open, the more likely it is that we would attract a loyalty of interest.
I have no problem with that. Also, the uh, uh, if we put it out there, then the community is gonna be involved to some degree. And they're gonna have input on uh what they want. Uh, and I think uh the main thing that uh I want to see with the community is that they're gonna be protective of the businesses that we already have, not wanting us to uh impact those. But uh, uh I don't know what the numbers are now for the drive-bys for that location, but uh if they were like the first week, uh that's become a more valuable uh spot to be uh for any business going in. So um, I I I don't know what we're, are we looking to just put it open to anybody for a couple of weeks to say, you know, make proposals and come uh give us your
Go ahead, Gil.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are we talking about opening it up for businesses to make proposals?
Yeah.
Not community necessarily.
Well, I think
I think there's
The RFP, it has to be specific on what downtown plan.
Yeah.
It doesn't, you can't open it up to, oh, I wanna buy this.
Right, right.
RFP.
Right. Well, that's why
Formalize on what we want and they have to meet those requirements.
I was that, see, I was gonna say, shouldn't we have some kind of requirement of what we want there before we just start? I guess we do.
And and we do.
Yeah.
We divide that RFP requesting that.
Because ultimately, what we, what we want is a successful business, whatever it looks like.
You got that right.
Um, and and if we have the community buy-in, that, you know, whatever that looks like also, it's going to be more successful than if it's shunned or, you know, we talked about the different communities, like we talked about the community, different members of our community who have ongoing businesses that may be impacted. We don't know. I mean, we don't
And this gives them a chance to say, hey, I wanna put this kind of
Right.
Or I wanna do this.
Right.
And that leaves it open to them.
And if we did that, if we did have a town hall type thing or some sort of uh, where the businesses that had an interest would come and present themselves and people could listen or I don't, I don't, what's the next, what's the next step after that? I just don't know.
And it, if we wanna sell city property at a minimum, we're gonna have to have a public
Yeah.
If you wanna get more involved in that, we, that's a discussion that we could have. But at a minimum, there'll be at least one meeting for the public.
Okay.
We owe it to us, you know, these people who live here and the ones who visit to do our due diligence, make sure that if that's, if that's what we're gonna put there, the first offer, that that's the best thing for our town, not just, okay, they offered, let's do it. I mean, that would be too easy, but are we taking into consideration our town?
Yeah. Well, I, I think
And that's what the RFP does, is give them a clear focus on what we want.
Right.
You know, and then from that point, whoever sells out, yeah, or whoever
Well, it also helps us give the community some parameters around what we're doing and why.
Teaching them information.
Yes. But, yeah, no, I agree. I guess um in my mind, the public hearing should be a good thing afterwards that we give everybody. And it might be a long public hearing. You know, but that would, wouldn't that give everybody a chance to say something, give us information? Or are we talking about something? What else would we do? Well, the coolest thing, which when when we had our last meeting, the coolest thing was, there was, there was some community members that were like upset about the the how, the 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 uh
Variants.
The variance until they were explained exactly what the facts were, what this meant, what this meant. And I think that was huge in having that kind of laid out. That was, it was, yeah. So, so we would just, at a public hearing, we would be, need to be prepared to answer, you know. Or have the resources to answer. Exactly. So I mean, it would be a pretty, pretty, I mean, it would be a public hearing that we didn't really need to work on. It won't be as simple as what we've done tonight by any means.
Because I I'm sure every business in town is gonna be wondering, okay, are they bringing in whatever to compete against me?
Right.
You know, are we gonna have a, you know, a Chevron station over here and a Shell station there, you know, another coffee keg, you know? And, you know, I, I, I'd like you say, I want them to be comfortable that what we're doing, uh, we're considering them.
Yeah, it'd be true.
And uh, that we, that's where we should go back to uh how long would you think it would take to get respondents to say if they're gonna respond uh about that lot? You know, two weeks, a month?
Ninety days. Ninety.
I'd give it ninety days.
Because that's
Because that, you know, that gives the Jimmies and the Jerry's time to put a plan together, time to have their architectural side of it taken care of and present it to the board.
I don't, I, I don't wanna really go that long, I don't think. But it, I'd like to be, let's put it this way, I'd like to be quicker. I don't know if it's, if it's possible.
Well, if we go and that is
Slow down a bit, give them, give them the time. Because really, okay, let's just say, yeah, yeah. We would actually put something that has the means of something, that has the means to meet our uh RFPs that we put out there. You know, the the things that we want. It's gonna take them a little time to get that stuff together and present it. I mean, thirty days is pretty quick.
Do they need a, in a different business or same business or do you have a clue?
Oh, yeah. No, 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 no. I'm having, no, but I'm just giving Yeah, I don't wanna deal with, you know, what what we are, a thought process and and away it goes. But if they do, you gotta give them a little time.
As exciting as a big, you know, business like that coming in, I think it is due diligence for the community to give them opportunity to have a say to, hey, wait, we didn't realize, we, we'd like to do something, you know, and and of course, we're gonna have fifty guys. When we do, that's gonna, you know.
Well, I think there's a secondary thing here that's important. There's starting to be some discontent and questioning of acquisition of city property and holding it, what our intent is, even though it's pretty transparent what our intent is, it's out there if you don't find it. But not everybody looks in the right places. This will allow, will allow me to have even more visibility that we are, that we do have a method behind what we're doing here and a desired outcome. And this is our path, another step forward in that desired outcome. And I think that will satisfy another element outside the business interests of our community. The, it just people that are interested in, um, you know, wise use of of the city's funds. And just checking that box and saying, yeah, we're making some progress on this and this is why we're doing this. This is where we're going. And we're, we're jumping over this next hurdle. Now we're here from here, saying that we're out of the acquisition process and we're into the disposition process. And I think that will will um answer some questions that are out there right now and some curiosity that people are having over what we're doing. And so I think those two things together are real good things, no matter whether it takes thirty days, whether it takes ninety days, those people are gonna be have some questions answered and that's a good thing to them. So they got, they got it for me. So if it takes us ninety days, I I I'm ten degrees with John on that, but I think that, you know, um, we it, it thirty days is a big, big turnaround to get a piece of paperwork filled out and that can less less to to come up with, you know, a business proposal or anything like that, a vision and a plan. I, I mean, I guess it kinda depends on how, depending on our RFP, how in detail we're looking for it. I mean, you know, we do, when we do start to work and somebody submits something to us, we go through a big process where we look at for technical confidence, does it scratch? You know, does it check that box and run it, vet it through these things? Hey, I kinda just, I think it depends on how far along we need that to be. You know, if we wanna scale that back and kinda not have it fully fleshed out and say, we're willing to just have you submit something with a vision on it, maybe we could jump, we could satisfy that sooner, we could narrow that one down. If you want something that's got, you know, architectural drawings or or um, you know, some kind of financial backing issues or or other things to get more and more and more into detail. The more detail we want, the more wind, the longer it's in that window. The, the less we want, the shorter that time period. You know, if we just wanna say, hey, does anybody in in the city have any interest in doing anything with this, so, you know, give us kind of a sketch of what you wanna do throughout thirty days. If we say we need something that's gonna have architectural drawings, financial sheets, um, how you're gonna finance this, you know, everything else, then we go for the ninety days.
Yeah. And if we don't make it that specific,
Yeah.
It could take them ten years.
Yeah, we need
And we don't want that.
I, I agree. So
I think if we did it till Sep- till September, ninety days, that would be September first, right? Day's the first of June. So, so then that would give the the summer for outside. I mean, it would be great if someone in town came up with an idea that was, that was six, that would be successful and beneficial and, you know, it would be wonderful. It would also give outside businesses, which we're already looking at, an option, you know, someone who we haven't thought of or who hasn't thought to come out here, but if there's information out there that, hey, there's a nice plot of land with a great drive-by and, you know, right on the way to the lake in a small little town, that could be, that could be another option. But right now, we have one option that we're, we
Right.
We wanna make sure it's the right
How about sixty days? It, it just seemed like, like what he was saying. If it's the local people and they do a concept, it's like what we're doing with this library, you know, fifty thousand dollars for a drawing, you know, they're not gonna do that until they get the word that yes, th- this, your concept is what we want, you know, uh, and I'm not so sure that anybody
They gotta meet a timeline.
Yeah, yeah, but the, yeah, they got one that's going forward, but, but I think people, businesses or people will know uh what they wanna do. And I, I don't see anybody doing drawings or anything like that until they get the word, because fifty thousand dollars, like, you know, that's a lot of money for
Could we do this in like a, a two-headed snake here, like, because my worry is we wait ninety days and nobody has any interest. And we, and we've held on to that property for another X amount of time longer than we need it. Could we do this in a, in a two-phased aspect to say, hey, we don't need a lot right now. Does anybody around here have any interest in doing anything with this? This is kinda what you're looking at for acquisition of it. Give us a real brief description, an idea and go, we want this in thirty days. And then go, and then see what we get. And then you go, okay, well, we had three submissions. Okay, within, then then we know we've got something. We've got some people to show in. And then we go, okay, well, now there's three of you that have submitted, you know, brief sketches of what you wanna do with this and your plan.
Yeah, but I can submit something in thirty days and say, I wanna build a pub down there. You know, a pub in the
I would, I would expect that we, we would have a standard of, hey, we, we don't wanna wait twelve years to develop this. We, we want something brick and mortar there, you know, on onsite built within X.
Right.
You know, and and that way, we're not spending ninety days waiting for nobody in the community to submit nothing.
Right. Well, it, it seems like that's a little bit, it's part of the RFP is, is they need to understand that they would have to have it built in a certain length of time. So, so when they look at it and they say, oh, I wanna, I wanna try this, but they, they start seeing the timelines that they have to meet if they were to get it, you know, I mean, wouldn't that narrow it down?
That's a good work here. So we go ahead and possibly just throw it out there and say, okay, Jimmy wants it.
Oh, I don't mean throw it. I
No, I, I know, but I'm just saying, okay, Jimmy wants it. He says he can do it in this amount of time or somebody else. Say, I say I can do it in this amount of time. Okay, what happened? Six or eight months down the road, the funding's not there. I can't do it. Oh, I'm gonna have to come to the council. It's also gonna have to be another year. Oh, it's gonna have to be another year. It's gonna have to be another year.
So we really need to have them show us what they wanna do and the funding. We've gotta know
But how are you gonna do that without having the financial?
Well, they'll have to come in with the financial.
Jeremy, what would the process be for getting the word out? Is there, is there, like, we put the pews on that site? Is there a, is there a site where you would put that word out?
There, there is. The state economic development, uh Business Oregon, they have a site called Site Prospector for developers who are looking for industrial parks or uh properties such as this. Uh, there are also, uh, I mean, there are different magazines throughout the state we could advertise in. We could send it to the local chambers of commerce. Chambers of Commerce in those roundly counties, begin to put it out to their members.
I guess there's, that's what I'm doing. I mean, how, how many, how many things do we wanna have to consider? Um, the other thing I think in the RFP is, I mean, what people need to realize is we're gonna be looking for that business to be super sustainable. That they're really gonna be successful. Um, hopefully it's just gonna benefit everybody. Well, right. But I mean, so, you know, some ideas that we may not, you know, I guess the community needs to realize that there are criteria and we are looking for, that and there may be some that we're not feeling strongly enough to do it. Well, for that spot, that's Right. Well, right, that spot. Yeah. But I mean, yeah, I'm saying overall.
I, I don't know, I'm kind of a base level and I, I may sound biased, but I'm not really looking for success. I'm looking for somebody to develop that property over there and put a building on there that really stands out in our community. In the long run, do I care if it succeeds or not? As long as another business can step in there and utilize that building to make it grow and keep it going. That's, that's my goal. Is on that block over there, to have a substantial development of a modern building that upgrades the look of our downtown and offers a facility for any business to come there and do what it's gotta do.
Yeah, for success.
And to get our money back for our, for our acquisition and further get us however, if they succeed, wonderful. That's awesome. Then we don't have to worry about, you know, roll over of people.
Because we don't want an empty building sitting there.
Right. Well, what we don't want even more is an empty lot sitting there.
Well, right. I agree. I, I agree. I'm just trying to find that balance.
I, I really like the idea of having a thirty-day submission and and feeling the, feeling the temperature of the community if anybody's interested.
Have you ever done this before? Could you talk for this?
I'm actually looking at a, no, I haven't done this before, but I'm looking at a RFP that Lane County Economics sent me, that the city of Benita did. And they follow the process. It's very similar to what Council Stratus is mentioning. And I'll send this to all of you so you can look at it. But there are three tiers to it. The first tier, you have to send a letter of intent. And then you send some basic information about what you're gonna do. You have to turn that in before you go to tier two. If you don't turn in the tier one stuff, if you don't turn in a letter of intent, then you're out. Tier two has a little bit more detailed stuff. Then tier three is where you really get down to the finalists people.
I think that way we shorten that time window up.
They
But still
Probably make it ninety days, but every thirty, fifteen, you'll have a different They, yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you make it all the way to the end, it ends up
Let, let me screen share this
Or even a little longer.
So I kinda like that idea.
But I wanna close that window if nobody's in there.
Yeah, exactly. And, and I'm with you too. I, I don't wanna, that's my only dilemma is I don't want it. But I also get what John's saying in terms of really bedding this well, or we're, we're not gonna have, we're not gonna, I mean, if we didn't go with you know, we can, I mean, a business like that, you're pretty solid, I mean, you know, there. But when you've got smaller, you know, you've got more optimist, familiar type people, I mean, you know, you're, you're taking a little more
Yeah, that's a long guy.
Yeah, I, I
We don't have to follow that. We shouldn't do the date.
We can follow the
We can
I, I know, I, I understand that. We can set it on dates, but on, on this one, this one here, that's eight months out, but I
Well, they, they were trying to find a very
A big building.
Specific.
Very specific. They were trying to get a fermentation business there. It's very specific.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
Okay.
It took eight months to do that one.
A newspaper building there.
Around here, those things.
I, I, I think that uh, if we had tiers like that and they were like one month apart, which would give you the ninety days. That way, we know the people that's gonna be interested.
Yeah.
They know if anybody's already interested, they know that we're interested and that we want them to go through a process. And we have the local people that if they wanna go through the process too, and they have something, then uh, they can go through the tier one and then they can go and then they can go through the tier two, and then they get to the tier three and they can do the, uh, we'll have the public hearings and everything like that. Have that open house and, uh, and discuss it at that, I, I think that, uh.
I agree.
I I like to see, I like to see something happening during those ninety days instead of just, because if if it's like, like too, too many things, you know, y- you know, in eighty days, I need to write something up.
Right, well, and the other part is if we do that, like do thirty day intervals and nobody from town or anything is interested, we can skip right to the next.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can buy that number three, go to number three, this is what we want to make it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And go, go from there.
But then we've done our diligence to make sure everybody has that off of them.
But the number three includes explaining financing or or do we, is that at that point do we care?
Honestly, you really don't care about financing. I'm with him on that, I mean, a viable business, bring it in, we got a facility left.
Well, yeah, but don't we want some sense of the finances and we know they can really pull it off and they don't do what you just described where they come back and go, oh, we don't really have.
Part, we don't really have it and we.
I mean, shouldn't they be able to show us something?
Number tier two, financial.
They've already built the building.
Yeah, financial too.
I think there, I think there's a real concern over them having enough finances to acquire the property. And then there's, right then, I mean, uh, they've got control.
Exactly.
And so if they, if they have that three hundred and seventy-five to four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar number and then they, their financing fails or or something occurs with that, then we've got a real, you know, we've got a real concern.
Well, and that's something that we need to find out, we write that in the RFP, you have to have it up and running in so many days or by the end of the year or by, you know, March.
Or some kind of milestone along the way.
Right.
But the, uh, the houses up on the hill, back in the days whenever money was easy and everything else like that. You had to have plans submitted one year from the date of your purchase.
And you had to.
I I I realize, that's what those were, but so we can put in there that we need plans, you know, three months, six months, because whoever's gonna do it's gonna have an idea, but just like that with their architect, you know, within six months, plans submitted to the city. You know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, but that's an arbitrary date, whatever the council decides.
It would be great if we got some other big businesses, definitely, but I think in my mind, the key is we have opened it up to the community. Yeah, and we've given them.
They've given them a chance.
An opportunity to, yeah.
Good work.
Anyway.
Well, and then it doesn't feel to them like we're just. And they're just down there, so they're not having. Cause that's what we're here, we'll find out what they don't want. And if they know that there's something like.
You have some questions?
You know?
Okay, let's go ahead.
Uh, am I understanding that city council was interested in following a similar process as what I've shown here for the city of Veneta?
Yes.
Some more, but. It's a failure two hours.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
I like the idea of financial capacity being on tier two, so that way they, we get, we know who's interested and then right immediately we know, find out who's got money.
I like that.
Yeah, for sure.
And whatever else is there, I think, yeah.
And two levels of financial, the one is the back of the purchase of the real estate, the one is the back.
Yeah.
The second question I have is, we have a lot going on right now, so what are your expectations as far as having a request or proposal for you to look at and go, how fast can you do it? I mean, I'd love to say, you know.
Right, Jeremy, don't.
So, we can look at it.
Let's be, let's be realistic about what you can accomplish when you're trying to set priorities.
If I didn't have to hire a city clerk, I'd say by your regular meeting.
Yeah.
So, this is Joyce's fault?
Yeah.
That's exactly what you said.
Have her fill it out.
Thank you.
The, uh, I I would say try to come back to us at the next meeting. If not, then, uh, we maybe we can have a special meeting, uh, the following week, uh, uh, you know, we can find a Tuesday there that, you know, we can keep working them on out, you know, we're just focused on this, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think this is important enough for this, uh, from, you know, a variety of levels that we can afford to, you know, have a little bit of pause in getting it done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Take your time if we have to.
Yeah.
Speaking of Joyce, you s- you put out some words that, uh, said that you had some really fine candidates, so I like that idea. I was impressed by that.
Oh, over the weekend, I, yeah.
Good, good to hear. That was good to hear.
I have to tell you though, it's not gonna be easy, you guys are that many, I live at that one, oh, my goodness.
Waiting on the three tiers, maybe by the next council meeting or the week after that, hopefully, does that sound fair?
Yeah, and I just wanna make sure Jeremy doesn't.
Yeah.
I'm communicating where you're at and and, you know, being real with us about what you're getting done and not, not making this something to where
Yeah.
the time pressure is making you maybe, uh, not create as as, uh, a well-thought-out RFP process. I think having this well thought out and well, not communicate to people is is also.
If it goes in the next month, it goes in the next month.
Yeah, I don't, I I understand time is of the essence, but we wanna go right.
Yeah.
Yes, that's, yeah, and so we wanna do that after that.
Anything else from us on this?
Cause that's good for you, Jeremy, and you get that answer.
Absolutely.
Anything else of Mr. Pavel from us on this?
No, I was happy to hear the minimal amount of abatement that was needed for the building, that was actually pretty good, really.
Well, what we said in the grand?
Yeah, that could have.
Well, and that is something we gotta be working on while we're trying to get this going too, so.
Un- unfortunately, that means we're probably gonna have to put off the burn the learn event, cause there's like a ten-day notice period.
I've worked with ATEZ before and they're very responsive, so you may get a call from him and he may be able to fit you to schedule and go, yeah, we can do that funding.
From, from whom?
From ATEZ.
Oh, the, well, there's a mandatory ten-day notice period, so that already puts us up to the, there's a June twelfth deadline.
Gotcha.
So.
Yeah.
We do it fourth of July. See the fireworks down there or the house.
Fortunately, we're working on getting rid of the house, so that kinda buys us some time.
I I also think it gives us an opportunity, I didn't make much progress, I'm getting used to information. I think we can maybe figure out a way to utilize more of the building materials out of there that are still usable with that window. You know, after they do the abatement, we may be able to offer somebody opportunities and then take the windows out and be able to still usable and really kinda, it's not a giant, um, constituency that's concerned about that, but I think anybody is, you know, um, you know, the first thing was getting rid of the house, it's housing, that's a, you know, not a good thing.
I have that question, yeah.
I understand that, I understand that. The next thing is, okay, well, if they're gonna give her the house, let's try to, you know, building materials if they're at a premium, let's try to utilize those and I I get that too, so maybe we have more opportunity to do that.
I I have to say though, I have that question and I was really pleased with when I explained it after that we were doing, oh, well, that makes sense.
Yeah.
I just was thinking it could be low-income housing, right, and unfortunately, nothing's low-income, exactly.
She might go in and think, oh, it's a test itself.
Yeah.
The main thing about that, we were gonna go in there and do some old abatement, so, you know, when we started giving away lumber, gotta.
Oh, yeah.
I I'm not as concerned with getting into the, the, you know, the framework and the skeleton of the building, having the windows or.
Yeah.
Would be utilized, really simply, not a lot of risk taking those windows out, it doesn't mess with the structure.
I know.
I think Vaughn would not be happy if one and a half people start taking studs out of the walls of the.
Kind of a, it's the whole problem.
It would, it would be pointless.
But the windows need to go anywhere.
Well, I would just say, if you know somebody wants to do that, whatever, probably talk to the fire chief and see, uh.
There, there is a good two thousand dollars for the windows in the house.
Uh, you know, that, uh, like I say, uh.
And is there anything else we?
I haven't been through the house, so.
There's a refrigerator, there's a stove.
Yeah.
It looks like somebody already took the heat pump, the duct.
Yes, we are.
We, we took that, Al, it's in.
Did the nail box, did somebody take the nail box?
Is it, it's gone?
I didn't notice, that's what I did.
I think it still is.
My goal is to tell me I should get it.
Yeah, let's hope somebody took that, maybe.
I got a P O box.
I don't know that we wanna advertise it, but, uh, if you know of anybody wanting to.
I think we have, I think we have to be really careful about, about, um, how we deal with this. I think, I, in my opinion, I think, I almost feel like we need to take those things out, maybe, you know, I might even have time to go do it and then we take those and donate those.
Yeah.
Because what we can't do is go, Joe can get those windows out of there. And then Joe goes in there and gets hurt or something happens to Joe, or Bill goes, why didn't you let Joe have those?
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, whereas if we just take them out and go, we're gonna donate these to Habitat for Humanity.
That was the thing I have us at, if they wanna come get them.
And I don't, I I haven't had time to research that, I don't.
I don't even know.
Those windows out.
Do they use, they use windows or not? I don't know.
I just don't think that they have.
And I think people were more concerned about, you know, don't waste what could be reused. I don't think people are looking to get it themselves, I think that was.
Well, I wouldn't say that, I would.
Oh, I'm sure. They, they wanna get what they can.
We could probably say put a, for free side on the house and it would be gone by Monday.
I will, I will attest to that, I've done garage sales for years. I've locked their exam and all you do is put it out on a Sunday night and it's, I'm telling you, it can be a yard.
It's got an upgraded refrigerator?
Yes.
Yeah.
They wanted one in here, so now we.
This is nasty.
It is nasty.
Pretty big.
No, it needs to go in the garden.
Oh, you didn't, oh, okay.
This nasty, you have to bring in a hat.
I thought you said nice, that's different than nasty. Okay, yeah, but anyway, if, uh, somewhere, uh, to get contacted by anybody, if somebody wants to, you know, we, like I say, we, we don't wanna, we don't wanna have insurance issues and things like that.
I mean, I, I, if the city's comfortable, you know, I could probably go down there and maybe work with Max or something and we can really take the windows out, which I, I feel long, we'd be happy about that.
Well, they'll need to.
But we're gonna need to, I don't know whether this, I don't know about that step, so I know the last one that Vaughn or then they put plywood windows out that have to be around people just access them.
Right.
So, who would purchase that, the city or?
I believe he has the private.
Oh, good, okay, cause that's, that would be a good outlay.
I'll let, I'll let you work it out with Max.
Sixty bucks.
Sure.
Yeah, I hear you tell you.
Yeah, eight, yeah, they had.
Oh, really? What did you hear about Katie?
Yeah.
Yeah. Before they closed it up, they went in and spilt all the copper wire out of it and they had already sheeted out things. Oh, and the whole electrical.
No, they didn't have the data, they didn't hold them that.
Oh, oh, good, I guess I didn't.
I just found out.
Good. But it's nevertheless, I mean, they're just stealing everything, I think, later anyone's on right now.
Why are you shooting?
They won't steal a place. They won't steal a place.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, moving on. How about the update on the library renovation project?
Is that where we're at though?
But you got no problem.
Oh.
I sent out an email last week after my Friday phone call with the architect and library consultant. We're gonna need a good eight hours for everybody to work through this process. Uh, when we looked at everybody's calendars, we tentatively set aside Saturdays since most of you work during the day. I understand one city councillor might have some conflict, it's some scheduling issues, I have some city staff who should be involved and probably won't be able to, I have one library committee member who won't be able to participate.
That meaning it's Saturday?
Yes, Saturday the fifth, so if if that's not gonna work, I need at least three options that I can take to them, it doesn't have to be a, a certain day, we can do an evening and then a morning, but I need some timeframes that I can take back to them so we can set this.
Jeremy, in, in my experience, I don't know how many people you're talking in total here, it's gonna be dang near impossible to find an eight-hour window that works for everybody. I I almost feel like you should, I mean, if, if, if it's okay, if we have enough people to make it work on the day you've already got scheduled, in my opinion, I think you should go with it. I I think that, you know, we can sit there and try to hash it out and look at, everybody throws in three different things, well, that's just amongst us that, you know.
And then how many people is that, when you're struggling to, I think we need to look at how many people can't be there Saturday.
Yeah, I do, I do too, I mean, we, we, we wanted to look at, you know, sixty, seventy percent participation and extended audience. But if you've got that already, I, my, my thing is go with what you got there.
Appreciate it.
You know?
Well, or we move.
I I would like to get off the one that has.
Evening and a morning or something like that.
So, I can't be here on Saturday, but I just feel like trying to, you know, the next Saturday, Sam, you're gonna have something going on on Saturday, after that, Vaughn's gonna have something going on, so.
Well, maybe what we need to do is, like Jeremy said, think about a little different approach.
But if we all throw three options, Jeremy, that's, you end up with fifty-two different options and how many, I mean.
Could you be here part of the day on Saturday? Pardon? Can you be here part of the day?
I think so, yeah, yeah, I'm gonna be at Springfield High School like twelve-thirty.
Yeah, see, so, uh, we're gonna get locked down probably in the first four hours anyway, so.
I, I probably have to head down like this.
You're just, you're gonna miss the pizza.
Okay, so who's the library person that can't be there, because if that person is pretty key, I don't know. And how is that person gonna feel?
How many library, uh, people do you, or is it gonna be able to make it? I mean.
I, I talked to one today, she can't be here, I tried to call the other one today and wasn't able to connect up with her. And I only have two library department people that I've been talking to.
That's like neither one of them can be there.
I haven't added.
You've got four library people and you, 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 and you gave me two of them, or you have two library people and you haven't considered any of that?
I have two, one said, definitely said she can't make it, the other one I haven't, wasn't able to connect with.
Okay.
But we have Hummel and she's library, so if we, I, you know, it's gonna be hard. Once we get all them there, some of us are gonna fall out, so if we're there and we can start the ball rolling, we have Kenny Hummel and she understands libraries, and then I think, uh, at some point, then, uh, uh, you, you know, if she wants to come back and the librarians can sit down and go through it, you know, this is what, this is what the council is looking at, this, this, this and that, do you have questions, problems, something like that, where the, we wanna get them involved, but, uh, you know, it's, we can't let this thing stop, I don't think, is my feeling, so. But I, I'd Saturday, uh, I'd say still, we go ahead with Saturday.
Okay.
Because like I say, if we didn't have, if it was just an architect without a librarian qualified person, then I would feel uncomfortable, but since we're gonna have someone that's qualified, I think we'd feel better.
I think if you can take good minutes or something to, you know, give them, you know, kind of a, a layout of what we talked about and discussed, allow them to see it.
Well, I was gonna say, we could do that and if they had any real concerns, we could address that, but.
Yeah.
Hopefully that other person would be able to.
Let's go ahead with it.
Okay.
So, what time are we starting?
Record it?
Absolutely, like, like, Al records everything, so, what I mean, even if they can't make it, instead of taking all the, those.
Yeah, that makes it simple.
Oh, yeah, whatever, all I meant was, yeah, no, all I meant was that, however, we need to take with them what we've done and how many pictures we've drawn.
Well, what I'm concerned I've got is we just a minute ago told you we wanted you to get working on this RFP for the house over there. If we push out the library, if that pushes out the house and you see all cascades and snowballs. So, I think keeping, you know, up in a timely manner, the best we can, we want people who can make it, we're investing on.
And it keeps the architect going, it keeps moving too.
Well, not just, but back to the RFP, is there something that you could get from us to help you push that along? What, what do you mean, for the RFP, getting it out there and, you know, multi-tape, and you get two or three things?
Cloning.
In the fire, yeah, yeah, right. Besides cloning him, what, what can we do down there? Uh, I'll send, I tell you what, I'll send you this draft, RFP, take a look at it, and if you wanna take a stab at getting some thoughts together, that'd be great.
Yeah, cause I, I write the patients for capital jobs stuff every day.
Okay, send it down.
It's not nothing I don't do already, so.
If you even wanna write the whole doggone thing.
Again, when, when I write something, I send it to people to look at it before I fit it all.
Well, but even if there was, you know.
Thank you, Father.
Yeah, you often just look at it.
Hopefully. Hopefully that's what it would do.
Like I say, you're, you're.
What did I get you into?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I will, uh, follow up with, with them, confirm with them, Saturday I'll send out, we revise, we generate everybody and I'll make plans for what we'll, what we will after lunch, yeah, baby.
Brunch, you mean?
So, if you get this before you can.
Get Max to barbecue.
Max, Max is on there, are you?
Good man. Okay, next up, on page one thirteen, we have the agreement for the financial accounting consultant.
This is on here just for you to take a look at, this is to renew our services with Laili, she's great.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, there's not much.
No, not one.
She's a good worker.
Yeah.
She's helped us a lot.
She's, she's saved our.
She's an asset to you.
Be interesting if she applied for the city clerk position. I don't think she wants it.
She doesn't want it?
She sat there too long, she.
I think she likes showing up three days a week or two days a week.
Well, I think she has other, I bet she has other things going on, so really, unless she wanted to give everything up, she's not gonna wanna pay the.
Yeah, I, I agree, yeah. But, but just the fact that she has had their time now, Joyce, for so long, I'm just, yeah.
Well, she'll be an asset to the new person.
But she, she works, yeah, she works well with Joyce, they back up each other, so.
Well, she'll be an asset to the new person, yeah.
It's a good arrangement.
So is that all you need, Tim?
Yeah, just for you to take a look at before I put it on your regular agenda in a couple weeks for the.
Okay. And the, uh, Oak Ridge PD, on page one seventeen.
Our contract with them is up for renewal, uh, the Oak Ridge Police Chief sent this to me. This would be a twelve month agreement, they do have a slight increase, I think about three percent, and asking us to pay for some software so that it makes it easier for us to pick this and write the ticket, and that. Uh, all, all that good stuff.
That pretty much covers the state funding that we get for having police services. It's an ounce we wanted for the, for the liquor and all this other, so we take all that and we pay for our police. We have a little bit extra this time, looks like the people were drinking more this last year and smoking more, so.
Thanks a lot.
I'm gonna just be super controversial. Um, and no, I, I don't think we shouldn't renew this.
So anyway.
You don't think we shouldn't?
I don't, I, I mean, I think we should renew it, but I also wonder if we should start looking at it and wondering what it's buying.
I mean, we should always remember that.
And, uh, well, yes, I know, Tim, but I mean, seriously.
Well, right now, we, we're pretty lucky that we've got Neil, who works well with City Hall, and they do the, uh, code enforcement, and if they've got complaints, he, he'll alter his routes and go cover those areas, so, you know, for, you know, he comes down here whenever he has time, and they can set him free, and a lot of times it's middle of the night, whoever they send down here, so.
Well, I've been.
It gets hard, like, we've been, we've been down this road, it's, it's just, to get more out of them for what we pay.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying, we, we can't, I mean, this is all we're getting.
Yeah.
And, and, and I understand that's all they can do, I, I, I'm not, there's no criticism, what's left? I guess it's just the question, either, you know, we can't seem to get full on coverage, I mean, we can't, we, we would have to do everything you talked about last time, the call seven is, is incredible, um.
It'd be nice.
What would happen if we didn't have those, and we used the money for something else? Is there enough benefit?
We wouldn't have the money. I think, I.
Did that money?
We'd be four out of five, I think that makes five, whatever.
Four out of the five even without them.
Yeah, we'd have four out of the five without them, but, uh, you know, we would just rely on the county sheriff, and, you know, the, and, you know, they have three patrol people for the whole county.
I get that, Don, it's, it's for down the road.
Yeah.
I'm not saying we jump into this right now, but down the road, you know, if, if there's other. It, would, could we hire somebody to do coding for you, it, do we need that more than what we're benefiting here?
We've looked at that in the past, honestly, we, we looked at a, uh, part-time person, uh, just for code enforcement, and I think that I'm not so sure that we didn't put it in the budget three or four years ago, and then I think that, uh, uh, we, it fell back out, but, uh, I think we had a part-time person that was gonna do code enforcement and some other things like that, that was gonna be their full-time thing.
Like I said, you guys, I don't know that it's a good answer, I just, I'm just bringing.
So I get where you're coming from, Gail, and, and, and I, I, you know, I, I feel very similar, last year, I think I actually maybe voted nay for funding, because I wasn't real happy at the beginning, but I, I kind of, I, I think that we can look at it this way and say, the city of Union and city of Springfield are three police force systems, and it's really easy to see that all the crime is happening in the world right now, and go, oh my God, we're, we're having, and we are, it sucks, but so are those communities that are three police force systems.
Right, you're right, yeah, I know, my son has friends that are everywhere.
Crime rate is still higher than us, when you guys, they've got the city Springfield police, they've got the state police, and they've got the sheriffs that all operate within their, within their city. And so, what are, we, we don't have, I mean, is, we, we wanna serve our citizens, we wanna address their concerns, and they are very concerned right now, they are looking at any way they can do it. I think that as a city council, maybe furthering the goals of education of, of, you know, lighting and fences and awareness and things like that, and, and keep pushing for those issues of, of what we can do, what we've got to make it better, because, you know, a lot of people are like, oh, we need to see more streetlights on, on the street, well, that's fine, you throw a bunch of streetlights down Pioneer, but that doesn't help the alley back there, and that's where the needs are coming from. So they're back to our lights and their motion.
Well, fun artists.
Well, right, and I, I, I get that, and I agree with that, I, I guess, like I said, just something to think about is, is this giving us, is there something else we could be spending this money on? It's, it's a hard question, it's a super hard, because I don't, I mean, there's this little security thing in me that doesn't wanna say we don't have anything.
Yeah.
But at the same time, you know, I don't know, so I, it's, it's not a question to jump into.
Even if we had a hired full-time role police person, they're not gonna be everywhere where the crime is, and they'll, they'll figure it out.
And I'm not even talking about going, I'm talking about, just, I mean, is there another position we could? I'm, I'm asking the question, I'm throwing it out for the discussion, I don't know that it's a good answer, I'm just saying. Maybe I'm not.
I don't know.
Oh, you are, you are.
Yeah.
But in Oregon, aren't the, like, fourth ranger guys the, uh?
Park rangers.
They're the police of the forest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they can also, like, if.
Yeah, that's true.
As well, right?
The park rangers, yeah.
Right.
Oh, but only in parks.
The park police are, they, they have, there's, there's some of them do, there's some that can't, but the, uh, uh, the code enforcement, the, the thing about having a code enforcement person is that we have right now, we give them to Oak Ridge to give them to the people, because we want somebody in uniform, because some of those people are very nice, in fact, some of the, uh,
Well, there's okay, there's a benefit to having.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, all I'm.
Oh, no, I, I'm not just screaming, I'm just saying, in fact, we had the county sheriff come out, when, cause we were gonna give a, uh, a code enforcement to one of the people, and the county sheriff said, let me go with you, Oak Ridge, because that's not a very nice person, and so it took, two of them to go up there to, to cite this person, and, and, uh.
Yeah, but wouldn't the county, uh, do the same thing with the?
Yeah, probably. When we get a deal.
But, but no, they'll offer, they'll do like, issue citations for us, probably not.
No, 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 but.
To back up?
Yeah, to go, if there's a different. I think the overarching issue is here is what can we do to further the goals of the community to try to address the crime that we're seeing within our community right now, and it has, it has a resentment and severity and, and, and the number of, you know, how we're seeing automobiles be stolen, you know, at least three motor vehicles have been stolen in the whole, posted about in the last five, six weeks, you know, a lot of, um, property theft, and, and, you know, and that's where I see it at, you know, the, the crime is property theft, we're not seeing a rise in violence, so. We're asking her otherwise.
And I, we are seeing them break into the house.
It's a financial based thing, so what, what can we do as a council to further that with the resources that we've got, we can't just go, okay, well, we're gonna pull this thirty thousand out and use it on X, because we don't even know what X is, but what can we do, and I think those things are, just like we're having, you know, loans that in the community where it's sick coming up in June on a police chair, on the, yeah, on, on the fire thing, and I think that really helps, because people are kinda upset about that and they're concerned about it. The same thing with this, I think the community education workshops, maybe we can get the Oak Ridge Police even to, to go into this.
That's a good idea, yeah.
You know, you know, show them that we are addressing their concerns, I think they all know that we're, we're, you know, handcuffed when it comes to the amount of money that takes, you know, they, they wanna push it up through the county to go and try to get the county and do a, do a wider tax outside the city, well, cause it's not just citizen law, it's walk, we could stack that, it's a larger thing. Give them, you know, give them an opportunity to do that, but we're really not the avenue to create a police force or fund a police force, we just, we don't have the resources.
But I do think that if, and again, I don't wanna, you know, just, I don't know how we could do this, um, and not, but at some point, turn, educate our community, you know, but it would really cost. I mean, not.
That could be part of the education.
And not on lengthy, I don't, I'm not talking about, you know, crazy spreadsheets, I'm just saying, you know, it would cost, like Don talked about, you know, probably about four hundred dollars a household in the district to hire or get a contract with, you know, law enforcement or whatever, I mean, it would really, and people, just.
Well, you gotta open one, see, that's the problem, that's why I, I see those problems around by the Mohawk people, that's one police officer for X amount of shit, what's it really gonna cost to do it full-time, because
Well, that's what I'm saying.
The thieves are here.
But, Tim, that's what I'm saying, is to just help them understand that, you know, it's really gonna cost us a million dollars or whatever, I don't know, isn't that a lot of money?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, and what it would cost. It would be really simple, it's like it'd cost two hundred and what are we, a thousand, and it's gonna cost every family this much money, I mean, really, a couple of simple numbers.
The information.
But to say, that's why we can't do more than we're doing, you know, we want to, but it's not there, and Mohawk mo- voted it down.
Yeah.
I think, I think, you know, Jeremy, could, could we open up another category within the bridge? Um, you know, law puts and stuff in there for fire safety, heading into the fire safety stuff, and we have a security, you know, um, tip thing each month to say, you know, hey, you, you guys realize, you know, if you put LED lighting on your outside streetlights, you actually have four lights for the price of one, or, you know, uh, these ring, these, these, this is the cutting edge of the ring bell system, or different kinds of bells, different kinds of the camera systems, you know, communicate with your neighbor when they're going on vacation, you know, the very tips that is easy, we've all heard them at one time or another, it's easy to kinda forget them and.
So how can we hope Jeremy get all the tips together so he?
There's probably resources that maybe even like the Oak Ridge Police can just go, hey, Jeremy, by the way, this is where we get our tips, I, I feel like we're pretty.
But I like the town hall thing, the fire one, and then it's.
But I think it'd be really good, and I think it's timely, I mean, it's super timely to have, we're doing the fire one because of the questions and concerns about the fire, but certainly with their questions and concerns about, you know, the public safety and the deaths and, and all that, and, you know.
I, I like your idea about the lights, except, uh, in fact, I carried that ball for a while, and then I found out that there's some sort of ordinance or something in this town about all the lights have to be down lights.
Light pollution, yeah, it's not just this town, it's.
Which doesn't.
Yeah, which doesn't. So when everybody's in the streetlights, street, streetlights, they have that crowds on them, et cetera.
Which they don't show that much light, yeah, not quite often. Is that the, uh, person for the presentation for the, uh?
I think so.
Executive session? So, do we wanna adjourn this and, uh, pick up the jet, back in session?
Oh, I forgot. No, I'm fine, I just forgot about it.
Anything else for the, uh, work session then? Okay, then we're adjourned at eight twenty-nine, and people need to take a break before we really.
Jeremy, do you want me to stay on?
Yeah, he was there. Uh, Max, you're free to go.
Okay, thank you, have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, Max. Uh, go ahead and call the order.
Okay, call to order the, uh, Logan Executive Session for June first at, at eight thirty.
Mr. Mayor, let me.
Okay.